A fifty year storm event.
So there was a little bit of a slowdown there anyway, so.
Yeah, so if you look at the topography of that, right there immediately of that culvert, the slope of the stream flattens out quite a bit and you see the water, the the stream kinda expands wider. Um, so I think that's, that leads to that, that conclusion to have that wider uh channel opening than what was there originally. So.
And there was Career Solutions.
Yeah, I didn't take notes on that, so please keep going with that, with Career Solutions.
Okay, um, we approved some job descriptions. Um, they're working with uh Labor Workforce Development. And talking about the in-person versus the um option to be the other way, so I think they're working at trying to go to the in-person for the board meetings. Finally, and there's a whole lot more going on. There was talk about the uh federal holiday, June, Juneteenth, to see if they were gonna do that as a paid holiday. Uh, and see, I listened in on their Zoom meeting update talking about the end of session and bonding bills. We're still in progress, but uh the session's supposed to end next week, I think. So I'll be watching to see what goes through. I think that will subal yet.
Did you uh, no, did you do the criminal justice one?
I did not get it.
Okay, Monty, were you available on that one?
I was here, yeah.
I got a couple of questions. Did Deb Anderson uh bring anything up about our NOKA beds?
The bed said Lionel?
Yes.
She did. Um, it sounds like we, we at one point were using a couple more than we actually are contractual, but we get the member rate now. So the general observations that juvenile placements are up and we are exceeding our one contractual bed. But she said it's kind of a mixed bag from county to county, some are quite a bit over, some are quite a bit under. So um, there have been available beds at that facility and the nice thing again is the non mem- excuse me, the member rate will may go over our one contracted bed.
Okay, did uh, did, I'm sorry, did Troy talk about the CAT team, how that's going?
Just, just a little bit and just in general, just a general update of, you know, they continue to um do their best and it sounds like, you know, that they're, they're dealing with a population that's uh kinda, kinda challenging. And, you know, they continue to struggle with these issues of being able to share because it's private data. And that's an issue I know legislative Mike is trying to work on. So it's more kind of a general update on we're flirting away and so work with these folks, but it is a challenge.
Thank you for that. I know, I know I contacted you and told you I couldn't make that meeting, so I was glad you could make that for me. Great.
One of the big things that was discussed was, was from Megan from Court Administration about uh how they're going to begin in handling in-person versus remote. It sounds like the Supreme Court has given local district courts some guidelines as to what can be remote versus what can be in-person. And kind of boil it down, it sounds like uh many of the criminal proceedings will be in-person, whereas non-criminal civil, civil will, will, will be uh Zoom, Zoom meeting. So that was the primary distinction I recall.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Want me to go?
Go ahead, you.
Well, I only had one, uh, we had MICA. And basically all we heard about is that the Senate's proposing this and the House is proposing this. And the only thing that I got out of it was that uh both chambers are proposing more money for broadband. But, I mean, basically, the House, we, the Senate proposes no change in the county program aid and the House is proposing thirteen million. So, I mean, we definitely like the House.
Which would be the first time in twenty years, is that right?
Yeah, I mean, and I don't think it's gonna pass because as we know, they're gonna get nothing done. They may have a special session to hammer out a few details and virtually should all stayed home since January. So that was about all. Uh, they, they're, the House has a three percent solid waste tax going back to score grants. That's probably good because they're just putting it in a general fund. It's, it's, it's residential, or, you know, constituents' taxpayer dollars. And it's being taxed and going right to uh, right to the general fund. You know, what do we got? Ten billion dollars today?
Create a bigger surplus?
Yeah, to create a bigger surplus, ten billion dollars today. But I don't think that the Senate is, you know, gonna do anything because you have this, you have this party deal where this one wants to do nothing to have it left over for the next session in case we take the House and this one wants to say let's spend it so we can get reelected. I mean, it's, you know, it's a mixed bag of nuts that happens down there.
For sure. Okay.
That's all I got out of it.
I'll expand on your MICA a little bit. I, I know one of the things that also came up was the uh, um the COVID responders, the, the
Oh, yeah, I got, you asked that question.
I, I asked a question just because, you know, you look at, there's, I asked some parameters about the, the
Oh, the frontline workers?
The frontline workers, because a lot of, a lot of people are ambulance crews, fire departments, all of that stuff, they're all volunteers because Minnesota is the third most volunteers in the country. And I don't think they are gonna qualify, so a lot of people thought that volunteers were gonna qualify, but they don't meet the hourly, on how many hours they gotta put in to, to qualify during that time. So I think Matt was a little stumped there for a minute.
He, he actually told you he was gonna go and check on it. Did he ever get back to you?
No, he's not gotten back to me yet. But uh, that's, I agree on everything else. It, it seems like they're messed down with the government. Uh, we, Commissioner Hine and I had a meeting at City of Sock Rapids over housing and, and potential opportunities, stuff like that. Uh, I was a little late to our broadband meeting, so I joined that from my vehicle, then I had to make sure I jumped online after we were kinda going, walking, talking over each other. But from that meeting, really, we went through um the proposals, stuff like that. Starting to work on some questions to go back, so it's a work in process. I know we got another meeting next uh Tuesday at one, correct?
Yeah, and on top of that, if I could just add, uh, next Monday evening, we're gonna meet with townships.
Townships, yeah.
We're gonna try to take it, where, for instance, we're gonna grab uh Maywood, Glenderrado, St. George at the St. George Town Hall. Kind of get them up to speed, so we're not gonna invite all the townships at once, we're gonna piecemeal a little bit.
Yep.
Commissioner Kapinski and myself, Amanda.
We'll talk about that in a sec.
Okay, good.
After. Uh, so, yeah, so it was, the, the broadband is, is it's a work in process and, and we're moving forward and hopefully we'll be able to update here in the next probably month. The problem is, is we're really kinda at a standstill until some of these border-to-border grants get released end of summer.
Yeah, but or until the House and the Senate figure something out.
The other side of things, we've got no provider that can start on it this year anyway. So it's really, it's, you know, we're in a hurry up and wait process. Next thing, I did have a APO meeting. There wasn't a ton being talked about. One of our presenters had to cancel. But uh, with that said, um, Commissioner Persky from Sterns brought up the fact of, you know, the the bridge, asked City of St. Cloud if they've been pushing the bridge south of uh St. Cloud on, off of Highway ten for the eventual belt line and everything. And there's a, the whole meeting was based on basically communication on the whole belt line, on issues that are that are forming everywhere around because development keeps happening and, and stuff in this belt line weight. And I brought up the fact, I'm like, well, this belt line has been in the works for decades and there's been no movement other than studies. And what do taxpayers hate? Studies that don't equate to anything. So I brought up the fact that, hey, why don't we get this going? Baton County has the right of way for twenty-nine. Let's get rolling on this and let's push it through Baton County. Taxpayer see movement on this belt line shows the state and federal government that there is a rhyme and reason to this bridge and eventual around St. Cloud. There, there was a lot of buy-in on that.
Good for you.
Yep, there was, there was a lot of buy-in on that, so. And um, Emmer had a rep there for that.
Oh, good.
So uh, she was going to take that back to Emmer's office.
Quit doing the studies and let's get some, some action. Was the person who wasn't presenting absent the one from talking about towards zero death or four lane stuff from here?
Yes, yep. And subsequently after that meeting, I did give uh Mr. Chris Bird a call and kinda let him know what's going on and stuff, so I think at our, we'll have to kinda get a meeting going. I know the APO only has so much money, but it could be a huge backing to push this leg of the Beltway forward. The last one was a Solid Waste Committee meeting last night. So I, when you brought up score, I'm like, oh, there we go. So we went through a bunch of stuff last night. There wasn't a ton to go through, so. That was it. Oh, one other thing that didn't make the meeting, um, Monty, and maybe we can put that on that next, next time, is I really wanna push the um, a county board with township cities like a, like a every-three-month meeting. I would throw myself in the ring to be the, the person from the county if, if that's what the board wanted. But we made a lot of progress, the groups of, of working with the cities, the townships, all of that. I don't think the townships and, and the cities aren't there, but the townships meet every six months. And, and we go there and give a little presentation and stuff. I think it should be more than that, every two to three months. And then we get the cities involved, so it's a collaborative effort to give updates and, and show that we're all working together on things instead of, you know, when everybody gets together.
In September.
Yeah, exactly. So I wanna put that on the uh next agenda to see if we could do something on that.
You'd like something on the next county board agenda for more, okay?
Yep, we can talk about it then.
Okay, you bet, you bet.
Yeah, because Commissioner Kapinski and I, we've been within a lot of meetings with the City of Sock Rapids and then we always go to a board meeting too. To just kind of give them an overview of what's happening in the county. A slight overview, I guess. So I had a lot of meetings, but I shared most of them with Jared and, and Commissioner Slung and uh, I had the Mayhew Lake Road kickoff meeting of doing the study on number one.
One.
Cassade one. My wife tells me three's east, okay. And actually, after that meeting, I did talk to Chris too, because I called uh Representative O'Driscoll. And we're setting up a meeting in June, because we're gonna try to throw County Road twenty-nine Beltway into this project. And Mr. O'Driscoll said that uh, get ahold of the planner and make it happen, and then he'll get Senator LaHaw in too. So that's good, that Emmer's representative was right there. You know, so we got the APO and we can throw this project together too. That was actually a really good meeting. Uh, and then meeting with Sock Rapids, of course, Career Solutions with Commissioner Slung and they did a comp study too, so they're raising their salaries. The question was, brought up by me and another gentleman, what happens next year when the funding fizzles out? You know, they gotta keep planning, looking ahead. That was an interesting discussion. Also, the Exec Board will be meeting in-person, they've got no choice. It's the rest of them, the other subcommittee, the other subpeople, the local workforce board that has like twenty-some people. We're still gonna do a hybrid with them. Until we're told we can't anymore. Let's see, I gotta keep looking at my calendar here. Didn't make, that's all I had then. Okay, great. Let's move forward. Comments, commissioners' concerns? Okay. Set committees of a whole.
Just one add is uh the possible meeting with folks from Watab Township and Mendat on the Carco uh project and um Julie from, I'm sorry, it's, yeah, it's Julie Johnson from Watab Township. She proposes either May twenty-sixth or May thirty-first. And I believe the timeframe would be one PM to three at Watab Town Hall. And again, the iss- the issues to talk about access onto Highway ten for this proposed Carco site there.
I cannot the twenty-sixth.
I cannot either. I think that was consensus that it was, twenty-sixth didn't work.
Yeah.
So
Thirty-first?
What is the best date? Thirty-first?
What time did Julie say or recommend? Excuse me?
One to three.
So Tuesday the thirty-first, day after Memorial Day, one to three. One PM, starting one PM at Watab Town Hall. Folks from Mendat, Watab Township. I'll make sure um Roxanne is aware of this one as well. I do not know if folks from Carco will be there. Um, I'm not sure, but you might wanna assume that they will be. Okay, that's all we had, it was just that one. Just that one.
Okay, motion?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Oh, no.
Motion to set the committee.
Yes, I'm getting ahead of myself. I'll second it, Commissioner Kapinski.
Commissioner Kapinski made the motion, you second it? Any further discussion on the call? Call the question, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, call is passed. Now, Commissioner Johnson.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Got a motion and a second, do adjourn, we're adjourned at twelve thirteen.
Sure you don't wanna stick around for a ditch authority?
I was just packed up.
I don't see anybody on the audience.
Yeah, have a good day. Ready?
I'm sorry, we'll call the, call over the ditch authority, mean, approve or amend the agenda. Chris, anything to add to it?
I have no changes.
For approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion, we'll call the question, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, carries. Set the date, approve and amend the meeting minutes on May third.
So moved.
Second, got a motion and a second, any discussion? Call the question, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Set the date, time and place for a public hearing for the regular, for the re- re- repair report for County Ditch number three. Chris?
All right, so we did this for ditch six at the last meeting. This would be just setting the hearing date so we can provide notice since we have a repair report completed. County Ditch three, we do have a valid repair petition. We just concluded the redetermination of benefits and accepted that viewer's report. In the meantime, we were working on a repair report and we have that final. So the next step would be to have a public hearing on that report before actually ordering uh the repair and actual clean-out of that. So, yeah, I'm just asking, uh, today to set the time and date and place to have a hearing on County Ditch number three.
For June seventh?
Uh, I would recommend to move that back. We already have a hearing for, well, and the reason why, because we already have a hearing for June, for ditch six on June seventh. Um, I think it's clear for the public, um, if we separate them, but we could. I, I also would recommend maybe the second meeting in June, just to give us more, make sure we have plenty of time to send out notices to all the um affected owners.
June twenty-first.
Yeah.
Yes, we have.
So that would be my, that would be my recommendation, the second board meeting in June.
Will this just be a simple motion that we're looking for, or we're gonna have to go through a forty-step process where?
For today, just a, a simple motion to set that time and date. On the, when we, after we have the hearings, we will have an order prepared that has the same thing, findings in order to actually order the construction repair work.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'll move to set the public hearing for um the repair report for County Ditch three for our June twenty-first meeting. Ten, ten AM.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion, questions on that? If not, we'll call the question, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries, okay?
All right.
Presentation report for ditch six.
Okay, um, actually, I wanna bring up the actual, so we did already set the hearing like we previously mentioned for June seventh. Uh, we have filed this repair report with the auditor, so just more of just for information to present to the drainage authority, um, our repair report. This is not the, the bidding construction plans, but basically the report from uh our consulting engineer, Houston Engineering. Garrett Munson, licensed engineer is the one that prepared this. But just wanted to touch a couple of things uh that the repair reports highlights. I, I wasn't intending to read the whole thing. But just, uh, like I said, we, we went through uh the process to establish what's known as the as constructed and subsequently improved condition, abbreviated ASICS. That's what we will repair to. Our repair report, we have identified a total of nine culvert crossings right now. And eight of them are being recommended to be replaced. The remaining crossing um is appropriately sized and at the right grade and is in good condition. That's why we're not replacing all of them. We do identify the location of it as a four-mile open channel system containing two-point-nine miles of a main trunk line, one-point-one mile of a branch one and located in sections twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight of Graham Township. It does flow from east uh to west. And about two hundred and, or two-point-eight square miles is the, the drainage area. The current condition of it, uh, this is what I, I wanted to point out too. There was a, a survey conducted in twen- uh, September of twenty nineteen. That was before we started the redetermination benefits process. They surveyed the open channel, um, and I wanna point out this as well. They took soil borings in the bottom of that channel to find the depth of sediment. And that's what led us to determining this, this ASICS profile. And I'll show some, some plan views here later that, that highlight that. Once again, it mentions the soil borings. A sediment depth of two feet were observed in many parts of the main trunk and in branch one. So we do know that it does need to be repaired to get back to that as constructed and subsequently improved uh grade. One of the primary causes we think of the sediment buildup is that there are several culvert crossings that were placed above uh the grade. What we anticipate happened in, in the past, that happens in many locations is somebody wants a field crossing, there's already some sediment built up in the bottom of the ditch, nobody realizes, they just set that culvert on top of the bottom of the ditch, when actually that could have been set at pretty, at a lower elevation. Uh, mentions the nine crossings, um, uh, five private costs of crossings. Four of them are crossings at public roadways, either the county road or township road. All five of the private crossings are recommended for replacement because of their condition and being at that higher elevation, so. Uh, here we are, we identified those. Um, here's like a good example, this field crossing. There's an existing eighteen-inch corrugated pipe, uh, we're recommending replacing with a forty-eight inch, so just placed on the flows and things like that, so.
It's considerable upgrade.
There it is, there's it in the table in the repair reports uh with notes of each, each one of these, so. Like this one, uh, for example, this private crossing, we believe it is appropriate sized, but it's above the grade and in poor condition, so we'll recommend replace it as part of this, this project. That's just an example. Oh, yeah, uh, the hydraulic impacts, uh, because it has sediment, significant sedimentation in several of the cul- culverts. We would remove these obstructions to open channel flow and restore the hydraulic efficiency of the system. The pro- proposed repairs will reduce peak water levels for smaller rain events. But they're not expected to significantly impact peak water levels for the hundred-year flood event. So this is where we get, as an engineer, I gotta look at the situation. We're not designing a road crossing necessarily at all these. We're looking at ditches. So where I mentioned, we talked about County Road eighty, the hundred-year event, um, the road may go underwater. Same similar thing here. If we have those one percent chances, another way of looking at a hundred-year flood event, there's a one percent chance of that storm happening this year. You, the water will still get out of the ditch banks, it may impact uh fields and it uh may go over road crossings. So I just wanted to point that out. Uh, it mentions wetlands, uh, that does not any, we, County Ditch six does not intersect any public waters or public water wetlands, so. But it is a, it's categorized as a public ditch slash altered water course, so it does not require a public waters permit or permission from the DNR. But we will notify the DNR just to stay in good graces that we are um completing this work. Oh, the wetlands, uh, it talks about when you have to even repair of ditches, you do have to comply with the Wetland Conservation Act. If we are uh, uh, draining or touching, if we impact one, two, six, seven, or eight wetlands and maintenance repair which drains type three, four, or five wetlands that have existed for twenty-five years or less, so. Let me restate that. We're exempt from wetland replacement if we're touching or draining one, two, six, seven, or eight, or these three, four, five wetlands that have existed for twenty-five years or less. So we're not anticipating impacting either or falling under that, in other words, we're exempt from any wetland replacement as part of this project. We looked at, we considered threatened endangered species. There are no state-listed threatened or endangered species identified within the County Ditch six area. Here's probably the biggest thing that we wanna touch on today is uh opinion of cost based on the engineer. So just for those public road crossings, anticipating seventy-two thousand nine-hundred-ninety-nine, pardon, nine-hundred-and-ninety dollars. Just cleaning out the, the ditch, two-hundred-seventy-nine thousand ten dollars. Add those together, uh, we're probably gonna be in that ballpark for a contract with a contractor to repair the ditch. Uh, we do have some contingency built into here, so hopefully we receive bids less than that. But you add in uh engineering cost, uh, legal and administrative costs, just our time uh working on this. We're in the range of five-hundred-and-twelve thousand dollars uh for repair of County Ditch six. And if you remember, it's about four miles of uh ditch that we'll, we'll be repairing.
Chris, do you go to uh local contractors for this, to get estimates?
We will go through a sealed bid process, so local contractors, I, I anticipate a local contractor getting this, just because of fuel costs and mobilization costs and stuff, so.
Mr. Chair, uh, just a quick question. Chris, though getting in the weeds, when you talked about private culverts, so those were to be replaced, is that cost go directly back to that particular pri- property owner, or is it a cost to the system?
Yeah, so i- in this case, it'll be a cost uh to the landowner. We'll make it part, since we have our contractor there, we'll make it part of the contract, but we will call those out specifically to be included on those landowners' assessments and stuff.
Okay, thank you.
And will they know in advance that they will be, have to be paying for them?
I guess yes and no, the information will be available to them. Our intent is to publish this on our website. Uh, the notices that are being mailed out do mention that this repair report is out on our website for them to, to look at that. So I guess if the board would like me to, we could do a special notification to those.
Yes.
And donors. We still have to have some conversations with landowners anyways, of those where the ditch actually travels through, and those are the ones that will have the field crossings.
I would.
Then, yeah, then at that point in time, you have to have a conversation with those landowners, they need to know ahead of time.
They're only responsible for the culvert cost, not the cost of digging the ditch in that deeper right there, right?
Yeah, it would be the cost.
The extra cost would only be the culvert, correct?
Yeah, cuz
Because it's a private culvert.
Right.
Yeah, we will go ahead and go into the attachments here to kinda show that. There's just some overview maps. There's the crossings that are identified. There's the wetlands, so these So, these are, these yellow ones are the type 1, 2, 6, 7, 8, uh, that were exempt from replacing. This is kinda what the repair report, a construction plan would look similar to this, is there not for, uh, construction? Um, I thought maybe we had a table in here though that showed that. What we will do, we'll call, in the bidding documents, those culverts will be called out specifically. So, we'll have a price just for that culvert that we'll be able to show those landowners what that contractor actually bid to, to do that. Um, and then the rest of the cost will be just part of the total cost that gets assessed, so.
I just want the landowners to know upfront, right away, what that cost of that culvert's gonna be.
Sure. Here's a good example of, when we talk about that as constructed and subsequently improved condition, that's this dark line here, um, is what we established. This dashed line represents the actual condition. And so, here's a field crossing. This is that one that is an 18-inch today that we're proposing replace with a 48-inch. And you can just see this, this, each one of these boxes is, yeah, five feet. So, it is, it is four feet or so, three and a half to four feet above where it should be at that location. So, that, that should, um, I, I'm carefully use the word improvement because in ditch law that has a specific definition. But doing the repair, uh, landowners should see, uh, an improvement in the overall condition of it. So, just one, wanted to point that out. That's, that's how we know that this does need to be repaired. Even in absence of, uh, repair petition, so. Like I said, today is mostly just information, answer any questions, um, those kinda things. We did have a conversation, I don't know if you remember this, uh, maybe it was last fall about clearing trees. And, um, the direction the board had given at that time was to talk to each individual landowner and see if they wanted trees cleared on both sides or if they're okay with just one side. And so, those conversations still need to be had as well, but I'm assuming that's still the guidance. Doing both sides obviously is more cost because there's more tree clearing to occur. And we would like to avoid flip-flopping back and forth because that's gonna, the contractor will have to anticipate that additional cost of moving the machine from one side of the ditch, uh, or the other. So, we'll, we'll try to weigh that out with all, each individual landowner and help them understand cost implications and, and what's, what's best for them, so.
The more cost effective, the better.
I think if we can get to an agreement with the landowners, ideally that if we all stay on one side, we throw off all those trees on that side just to do our work, we can keep that contractor moving efficiently and, and quickly through the project, so. Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Chris, as I said in my email today, sorry, Monty.
Yeah, there you go.
You know, it, I know this is a, a year of, we've had torrential rain. But I am really concerned of where this all goes. I don't care which ditch it is, you know, at least Sauk Rapids. But there, Sauk Rapids is actually wondering on ditch three, how, if we have a rain like this, what is gonna end up happening before it gets to.
To Sauk Rapids, I agree, yeah.
You know, you know, and, and man, I, I'm just worrying about opening up these waterways and going, okay, now we cleaned them, now all the water's gonna rush to wherever it's gonna go. And we sure hope it continues to go once it leaves our county. Or our landing spot, we hope it goes, because if it doesn't, it's like anything, it's gonna flood out, so. Yeah, no, that, that's, uh, those are legitimate, uh, concerns. And those are things that, that we wrestle with as engineers all the time. That's why it's really important that for new development, we're trying to build things into those develop, even our roadways. When we add a shoulder that's new impervious surface, uh, in the eyes of the EPA and the MPCA, we're supposed to be building in retention systems, um, in, within the project limits to hold that additional runoff, uh, or an equivalent volume of that new runoff within the project limits and release it over time. And the only thing is, you hope that everybody is, is doing their share of doing that, whether it's a commercial development or residential development or some kind of other development that affects the way water runs off of, uh, off of the land.
Chris, I really do like what we did on 78 with those, you know, the buffer.
Yeah.
That seemed to work.
Yeah, that's, that was, we tried to do that in the existing ditch, find areas where it makes sense to infiltrate that. That, that's the number one goal, uh, in the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permits is infiltrate that water. And so, we found, luckily 78, we had that because there's a lot of sandy soils up there, so, uh, do that. That's why we put up signs too to stay out of that area. So, so people know, the public knows that, no, this is not just a normal ditch, we're trying to do some things here with water runoff.
You probably won't be doing that in 62.
The only thing that isn't water is 62.
Yeah.
Water itself, you know.
For now.
Well, it is interesting. When we add impervious surface and we have wetlands next to it, it, it does seem counterintuitive. We have to build things next to the wetland to treat the water before it gets into the wetland, so. There is a table, the construction plans, I just wanted to show this, this is mentioned. It'll be broken out, each of those culverts, so we know, um, like the bidding documents will have another column for them to actually put their price in. So, we'll know each individual landowner's crossing.
Chris, is that more, there's a lot more culverts that went in these than when we did 13 and 15, right? We, we didn't have that many culverts.
To replace.
This was a four-mile stretch.
Yeah.
But that seems like an awful lot of culverts between private and, and township and county.
Yeah, um, you're right. We didn't, uh, replace that, that many culverts on 13 and 15, so, um.
But it's more, you know, there's, there's more farmable land in this ditch than what there was on 13 and 15. That's kinda what I got there, but, you know, get it all done, get it ready to bid so somebody can clean it next fall, next winter.
No, it's just, the, the way timeline's working, that's, yeah, that's what we'll be.
And you'll get better bids.
Anything else, Chris?
I have nothing else. I have a question.
Yeah.
With downstream into Sherburne County with the Elk River, do you know what kinda plans they have down there for keeping the water flow going?
I, I do not know. When it comes to the Elk River, since it's a public water, I, I'm not sure what their plans are.
I know a couple of years ago when it rained it, they really flooded out down there by South Palmer, I know.
I think, yeah, everything has to go somewhere. Even the Mississippi, we had our Benton Drive go underwater right at the location that it goes underneath the railroad tracks to get in the Mississippi. And Mississippi wasn't taking any more water than that and it backed up over the, the road, so. Once it, yeah, once it leaves Benton County, I don't know.
Anything else?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second to adjourn. We're adjourned at 12:35.